All right, I got 7:01 on my clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Let's start with Mayor's comments. On September 11th, 2001, I was in law school, sitting in a remedies class. And one of my classmates, sitting behind me, had her phone. She got a message saying that we'd been attacked on American soil. And the class got really quiet. And details were starting to come in. But as soon as she announced that we'd been attacked on American soil, one of the gentlemen on the right side of the room, Captain Mark McGuire, got up and walked out of the room. Same time, Paul Compton, another classmate of mine, as an Army Ranger, got up and walked out of the classroom. Their first response was confusion. They left that room to call their commanding officers to figure out what they needed to do. I never served in our military. My father did. Wayne Rieschel did. Jess, who served as a Marine, is that correct? I've been blessed to be around folks who serve our country and very appreciative of their service. Because of that, I have a proclamation I would like to read tonight. Whereas the city of Buffalo, Missouri, and our community have a great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while servicing in the armed forces, and whereas citizens of our country have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force, construed as a singularly notorious act of essential service, and whereas the city of Buffalo seeks to remember and recognize to our recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. And now therefore, I, Andrew Mead, Mayor of the city of Buffalo, Missouri, do hereby declare the city of Buffalo to be a Purple Heart City honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform, wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedoms. And testimony whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the city of Buffalo and the state of Missouri this 11th day of February, 2013. We have some gentlemen out there tonight who have received the Purple Heart. And I personally thank each and every one of you for your service to our country. And Mr. Kelly, it is a blessing to our community. He works with Sheriff's Department here in Dallas County and with local veterans groups. So I present this proclamation to you.
I have just got another Purple Heart medal. This, having Buffalo declared a Purple Heart City, to some people doesn't sound like much, but for us, it really means a lot. It's something, it's an award that you don't ask for whenever you're in the military. You can't apply for it. You've actually got to get shot, loaded up, whatever. You get to do whatever you had. But it's something that we really don't want. But if you have it. And this, like I said, don't give a lot. And I would like to present you, Mayor, from the special recognition award. And this bestowed with pride to the city of Buffalo, Missouri. Mayor, the ultimate, your dedication, support, honoring where this conflict went at veterans and becoming a Purple Heart City. Buffalo is now the third city in Missouri to have this one. And this is presented from the paper members of the Military Order of the Purple Heart Department of Missouri. I present this to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And also have the others.
He's smarter than the flag.
He's smarter than the flag.
He'll turn it on him.
He was in helicopters, I'm sorry. He called it.
Flying up.
He wasn't flying. The flag is appropriate for the flag, like on August the 7th, which is National Purple Heart Day. On any veteran-specific days, 4th of July Memorial Day, Armed Forces Day, Marine Corps Birthday, November the 10th. These Navy and Army guys know that. Flag Day would be very appropriate to fly on those specific days and stuff. But this is, we really appreciate this.
Thank you. And I will see that this is hung prominently here in City Hall and that our flag is hung to be at most here on the appropriate days.
And I'll also, we're getting a national registry in which I will get this to our national people out in Virginia. And we'll get this to them. We do appreciate this.
Thank you, sir. You're in the house.
The people I have here with me tonight, I've got Clayton Jones. He's our immediate, well, not immediate. He's now National Commander, which happened to be down here in Nixon, Missouri, where he's from. Jimmy Young is a past National Chaplain. He's our commander in Missouri, or not Missouri. You can have a National.
No, no, I'll stay here.
But he's our chapter commander down in Springfield.
621.
John here is Mike Fraser for the state of Missouri. He's also the adjutant for Springfield Chapter. And again, I'm the state commander for the Purple Heart on it. And I'm also one of you guys here, Settlem County Institute of City. Sorry. You got to think of my special. Thank you very much. Mike Fraser, thank you everyone. And we're going to get here so that you can leave your thing.
Thank you, President.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the other announcements I have. Buffalo Baseball Club met last Friday. I attended their meeting. We had been approached again by the representative of the Springfield Cardinals, a gentleman named Adam Maddox, real nice young man. He replaced our outgoing representative in conjunction of Buffalo night at the ballpark. Last year, we worked diligently with Buffalo Baseball Club, sold a lot of tickets. They ordered a bunch of extra tickets. And it was a very good partnership, very good event. I'd rather announce that this year, on July 27th, at Hammond Field in Springfield, will be Buffalo night again. And we will be doing that in conjunction with Buffalo Baseball Club. The city will have 200 tickets for sale. I believe Buffalo Baseball Club is going to have 300 tickets for sale. A lot of their tickets are going to be donated to their ballplayers. So I look forward to that. Again, that's going to be on July 27th. I think the game starts at 6:10 PM. And we'll be playing Northwest Arkansas Nationals that evening. All right, that's all I have for Mayor's comments. Are there any modifications to the agenda? I see none. Citizen comments. I'll open up the floor for citizen comments. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I'd like to know when we're going to get the air silence back in operation for tornadoes. That should come before sidewalk.
I understand, ma'am. And it's not a priority, it's a logistics issue. And our fire chief can answer that question.
It should be a priority.
It is a priority, ma'am. It is a priority. It should be this week, next week?
We should do this one.
Yes, sir.
You know, Wayne and Jess have been in the military. Did you have one person up there?
Who'd I forget?
The Purple Heart that took in, getting on, Larry.
Larry, oh, I apologize. Any other things for public comments? Have I seen none? All right, minutes and bills. I'm sorry, you get it, sir?
Yeah, on the bills, on the soft body armor, we've been reimbursed for 50% of that amount.
Oh, we are? Oh, okay.
I have a question. Correction on January 28th meeting. Mayor's comments. They should be sharing Reasrner, not sharing Reasrner. R-E-A-S-R-N-E-R. January 28th.
I'll make a motion to review the commission. With the correction that came in.
Second.
Also, we'll do it.
Kristy.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Motion passes. Committee of reports, budget committee.
I pass that report to everyone here. We kind of reviewed the transportation fund. And with some help from Debbie, we were able to narrow down that we have an anticipated balance available for other projects of about $266,000. We also discussed the different ideas for the capelum to the tax and what we could use it for. We kind of focused on downtown improvements. And then we also reviewed the budget, the general revenue. As far as Jess had requested, we review it for, to decide if we could afford to raise the mayor's salary. And as a group, we didn't see a surplus in the budgeting where that we can afford to raise the salaries. So there's still a deficit. More spending is more than we bring in. That's it.
Any questions to the budget committee? Department head of quarters. Ms. Paulson?
Any questions?
One, aye.
Yes.
In your comments, the natural gas line?
Yes.
Probably the only two gentlemen here in the sign that. Would you refresh, was that just a franchise contract?
Yes.
So it wasn't a detailed contract that they had to do certain things?
No, it was just allowing them to come into town. There's no requirements on the city on that, in that contract.
I understand what I'm asking. Is there a requirement upon the gas company? If they get this far, how they repair our streets and our sidewalks and our various other lines? Is that in that contract?
I will just have to pull it and refresh myself. She actually called about 45 minutes before I finished up my report. So I just thought I'd throw in there. Because somebody had asked me about three or four months ago if I knew anything about the natural gas. I don't remember who it was. And I'm like, I hadn't heard anything. And somebody said they filed bankruptcy. And so I just thought I'd put it out there that I did hear from them. But I will pull that contract and review it.
Curious. I sure hate to see them decide they need to go down Oak Street. And the whole bill is there. If we haven't made arrangements for them to repair the damage that they may do. I'd really like to see.
Yeah, no, I'll get that pulled and if I, I'll look through it. The attorney, it wouldn't have been Travis at the time, you know, reviewed it before it was signed. But I will get, if there's any question or any concern, I'll get that to Travis.
It may be five or six years down the line. I think that Travis should look at it. Just for our peace of mind. It's intended to do what we want it to do, and that's provide natural gas to the city, but also to not have to repair their damages to our property and how it gets hooked up to the people. Larry doesn't, you don't remember either?
I don't remember. I know they said, when they cut it in, I don't know how they was going. But when they're cutting it in, they run it up to your house before you had no cost in. So there's something to it about that. But I don't know how they was going down the sidewalk.
I just kind of like to look at it before I say it's time. One of these days.
Any other questions in the administration? Animal control?
Good evening. I do not have anything ambitious to note or report.
Any questions of our animal control officer?
Is it full now?
The pound? Not at capacity for caps. It is at capacity for dogs.
Any other questions? Building inspection. Any questions of our building inspector? Fire department, sir? This week, we did have a final inspection on our fire gear. Or was that late last week?
Friday, Friday? It was last week.
They came and inspected our new fire gear. And we signed the final paperwork. If that grant has been fully administered, it's a done deal. Any questions of our fire chief?
Yeah. We need some help getting that building painted. We're simply going to paint the outside of that building which caused the water issue. I know we've gone to a fire and had a fight with it.
Yeah, but we need a new metal door for that trunk.
Are you talking about an overhead door? Or are you talking about just the front?
I'm talking about the walk-in door. Before we paint. It's all over the metal doors and everything looks wobbly. We thought about painting the doors, but we need to put a new door in there first before we paint it. We've got, I think we already got the paint. I have to go down and check it, or check it brain. And also, we've got, I think we may have the paint form, but we didn't want to paint that door because it needs to be replaced. So, are you meaning the whole building? We don't have the whole paint for the whole building, but it needs to be painted.
We're going to try and fix it. We must be able to paint it. In the near future, we've got to do some maintenance on the building to make it back up to, it looks like the new building, the new floor.
Yeah, we've been.
There's somebody that's got the authority in buying it.
What is the order redoing the whole inside?
You guys spend a lot of time. It's good to, it looks good. It's just, we need the help that we need.
Painting the outside will probably help paint the outside because I think we'll just spray that.
We're in a situation whereby we can pull some people off the other parts to pay. Because I know it's nice to have the volunteer part of paying it. And we appreciate the fact that they do that work. You know, you can't always rely on volunteers to get something like that. And that's a major project. And we need to make the fire station look a little better. We've done a great job so far. If you need some help, I think we need to come from there. And let's do it and bring it up to date. If you need a door that's a couple hundred dollars, try to figure out a way to get it fixed and make it look good. Let's don't let it just deteriorate beyond what we can afford to repair later on.
Sounds reasonable. Anything, have anything, anyone have anything else for our fire chief? Parks and Recreation?
Just working on soccer forms. Going to get them out this week. How we get the skill assessment set up for the end of March. I mean, I have enough to have.
When does the soccer season start?
Two weeks after the skill assessment, so second Saturday.
Where are we at the line of sight? We're still at the park.
The parks, we're still getting added back and forth. And I believe Dominic is still working on adding members and a proposal to the line to the city. Last item. Any other questions? Police department, sir?
We had 107 calls for service, had 60 citations, and four vehicle accidents. We had 33 arrests consisting of 14 warrants, seven possession of controlled substance, three each of trespass and disorder of conduct, two each of stealing and resisting arrest, and one each of assault and peace of service. And then I turned in my report.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
You do have a pursuit policy? A red pursuit policy?
Yeah, it's in the manual.
You see authorized 120 mile an hour?
Yeah, just whatever's reasonable speed.
Any other questions of our police chief? Street water?
I haven't, I haven't, I just kept going to your board chair. We just did a work here and order to do a little air thing.
Any questions of Mr. Jasper? Tax collection?
Any questions? Can I back up to my report? Because I already have your answer, Jess. It is in there. And once I pulled the document, and I'll get a copy of that to Travis. It's pretty good language. I remember now what happened. Lisa Henderson was the attorney at the time. But this franchise, Bolivar worked through all the agreements. And then the city adopted the same thing that Bolivar did. But Bolivar put quite a few requirements in there, including making sure everything was put back to the way it was before. So.
Thank you.
Tax collection report. Anyone have any questions regarding tax collection? Waste plan or treatment plan?
I don't have anything to add. It's been pretty calm for the last month. So if you all have any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Payton?
Yeah. Where are we at with looking at all the lines and projections on that?
We're at the point maybe 49.
That's an old business item B. Got it correct. Yes, sir. Any other questions of Mr. Payton? We'll move on to water adjustments.
I'll make a motion we approve the water adjustments.
I'll second.
I'll call for a vote.
Wayne.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Kristy.
Aye.
That motion passes. New business license. We have three businesses that are up for license or license renewal.
I'll make a motion we approve that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll call for a vote.
Jess.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Kristy.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
That motion passes. We'll move on to old business. Mayor compensation. I have filed as a candidate for mayor, so I'm going to refuse myself. Let Mr. Stafford run this before we begin.
We're here in discussion in regards to mayor's compensation.
Well, I brought it up. And it doesn't appear that there's much support for it. As I said in the report, you get what you pay for. And I think volunteer is in spite of it. But I don't think the majority of the people realize just how much the mayor does. And any man, whether it's Andrew, or if you do your job, you're going to do a lot of work. And I think the salary that we're currently paying, I think that what it was before was too much. And I personally think that where we're at now, when you consider the percentage of raising it to $10,000 as compared to the overall budget for the city, when you're paying tons of money for various incendiary items, not to compensate the mayor fair for what he does, whoever the mayor is. We're just wrong. So I think it's fine to volunteer, but I don't think the mayor's the volunteer guy. I think you ought to at least give him some instead of to do the job that we expect him to do. I'm not going to make the motion again because I just don't think there's a, I don't think the board's behind it. I think you're wrong. But unless somebody else feels worthy to do it, it's going to die right there.
Do you want to hear any other comments? Any issues, Melon Hold? And then we come back and take over your position. Wash the hands.
All right. Second item under old business, sewer rehabilitation project. We have an engineer here and Mr. Payton.
I'll start off then.
Okay. We've met several times over the course of the last couple of months. I think we've pretty well come up with a plan of what we would like to do. There's two ways that we can face the issue. And so what we want to do is bring these issues to you guys and you decide on how you want to handle it. One way is we can go in and fix what we have found. And then with the money that are left over, go ahead and camera what we need to camera in the gravity system on the collection side. And if we hit a major problem there, then we can go ahead and repair it at that time. Mr. Jesky here has all the numbers that we need to examine that. And the other way is we go ahead and just camera with the money that we have in the gravity system of the sewer line and try to find any faults that we may have there. My personal opinion is I like to, I would like to do the camera work. It seems to be what me and Art wants at this time for us to go in, see what we have, or orientize the problems in the gravity system, and then address repairing them. But with that being said, I'm going to turn the floor over to Jerry. And he can give you a more detailed. But with that being said, I'm going to turn the floor over to Jerry, and he can give you a more detailed idea.
Just to give a, just a quick refresher. My name's Jerry Jeski. I'm an engineer with Olson Associates. Uh, we used to be stock consulting engineers. You might see that in some of the paperwork. But as I, as the mayor recalled in previous meetings, uh, we've been looking at some video of your sewer system, some that MRWA did, and then some that, uh, that the SINC, Ken here, has done recently. There's basically been three rounds of videoing, and we've been using those rounds of videoing to come up with a project to utilize your remaining SRF budget for, to complete that, uh, to complete some rehabilitation of the sewer system. As you see in some of the paperwork that you got, uh, that last round of videoing that was approved and you'll done, and it'd be really useful, now we found a majority of what we see is rehab needed, including why the sewer line needs to be relined. Thus far, we've only come up with around three thousand feet of line to be relined, and the total efforts, total rehab efforts, relining, a little bit of replacement, some repairs on sewer laterals and such, manhole repairs, all together, we've developed a project from examination of those videos of only about two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, and then when you add on the contractors, mobilization, money, and stuff like yourself, then then you can do that up to the two hundred and sixty thousand dollar range. I understand that you've got about three hundred and seventy, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of SRF money available. So, uh, after taking out money for rehabilitation engineering and these rehab items that we've identified in these, in this three sets of video that we looked at, there's still some money left over, fifty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars in that range, based on the current bidding fund, and all the two is just the estimate for the project thus far. So the question is, okay, we want to use up all that SRF money in one project. There's a free, most thing for your buck, you want to pay over and over again for mobilization, engineering, administration, stuff like that. So there's still some money left over, and it comes down to what do we want to do with that? And as Gus stated, the most logical thing to do with that money is to video some more sewer as part of the rehabilitation project. Figure out this project that consists of all these, say, five or six different rehabilitation efforts. Second one are going to be done, and when those are being done, those involve videoing anyway, because the contractor that does that needs to be able to show the city, here's what it looked like before I came in, I fixed it, it's underground, you can't see it, but I fixed it, and oh, I videoed it again, and here's the post-rehab video. So there's already going to be video personnel associated with the project to rehabilitate what we've identified. So the logical thing to do would be to have them also video some new sewer in the gravity system. We'll be able to show it, but you could also look at some other areas of what we think might be some eye on. And go ahead and finish off the remaining dollars and bond issued in the SRF project to go ahead and accomplish that. And then if something severe that does come up, it's very easy to change order that fix in while the sewer rehab crew is already in the city doing that mission bulk of the project. That's what we would propose to do. I think there might be some other ideas floating out there that don't necessarily involve the current range that we've done so far, but, you know, it's a lot to digest.
Hey, I have just a couple of questions. You're an engineer, right?
Correct.
You know more about this stuff than I do. And let me tell you what I know. I flush my toilet and it disappears.
Safe to say.
All right. Uh, you've had a chance to look at our entire sewer system to kind of get an idea of what we have, what's, you know, the five Ws, uh, what, where, when, why? You know, you, you, you have a good overview of what our sewer system is.
Yes, sir.
And from my understanding, it's your recommendation we do a little bit more camera work?
There's about a hundred and seventy-two thousand feet of line, and we've only videoed about thirty-two thousand. So that'll be a hundred and forty thousand out there.
Uh, a hundred and forty thousand, are there areas that you think we really need to look at as opposed to some areas we may not need to look at?
Yeah, there have been some areas identified through your staff on previous efforts, and as well as some areas based on pump station flow that we think might be worth looking at. So, yes, there are some more areas than others, and there's some fireworks there, yes.
Okay. And I, it would be ideal that we go in and were able to do a hundred and forty thousand extra feet and get it all videoed. But I'm assuming it's not feasible to do that unless we dip in other funds elsewhere.
Right.
How, how much do you think we're going to be able to do, uh, under, under the, uh, the current law?
Videoing, if you were to just video and only fix the things that are really severe, because you want to get as much video as possible, so you can budget for future projects, you could probably get more than what I outlined in this January twenty-third summary. You could probably get twenty thousand feet or so videoed. Maybe even more. If you, if you didn't do any repairs, the eighty thousand dollars, seventy, eighty thousand dollars would probably get you about fifty thousand videoed, if you didn't do, do any repairs. But you're probably going to find something that you got to fix, and so you got to extract some money out of that. And so somewhere between, let's say, ten and thirty thousand feet to get videoed, leaving some room for repairs on some of that. So you could almost double what we've videoed so far.
And still have the wiggle room to repair what we've videoed, or at least the hot spot?
I think so, yeah. We don't know what, what we're going to find, but based on the fact that we've videoed, the city's videoed thirty-two thousand feet of sewer so far, and we've only come up with about two hundred and thirty-three thousand in rehab, uh, maybe even call it two hundred and sixty-three of a project.
Hypothetically, if I, if I were to, and this is hypothetical, if, if the board were to vote to, to spend our capital improvement fund for approximately the first year and go through and do a hundred and forty thousand feet and just camera the whole doggone kit and bootle, uh, would, would that be even worth doing, or would that be a stupid idea?
It would be worth, it would be worth doing if you had, you know, videoing the hundred and forty or so thousand feet that's left would cost up to two hundred and one thousand dollars. You, uh, the idea, as I understand it, is that you've got three hundred and eighty thousand dollars thereabouts of an SRF bond to put a project together for. I called DNR about that, make sure that there wasn't a timeline on that. And although they're being nervous to spend their bond money as fast as possible, legally, there is not a timeline on that. It does not expire. But the idea, as I understand it, is you want to do a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar project and get some rehab done so that you can show EPA that, uh, you're doing more than just looking at it, you're fixing it too.
But aside from just making EPA happy, we also want to legitimately involve as much of the infiltration as possible. Uh, if we were to pull funds from, from other sources, uh, in addition to the SRF bond company, would, would that be worthwhile, or do you think we're going to be able to get by and accomplish our goals just with three hundred and eighty thousand?
If we wanted to create more rehabilitation efforts than what we've identified so far in order to use the SRF money to do all rehab and not more looking around, then I think it would be a good idea to, or at least it would, it would not be a bad idea to pull funds from somewhere else, do some additional videoing to come up with more areas of rehab.
And the reason I ask that, we've, we've approved a half-cent capital improvement tax last April, and started realizing funds, a lot of that recently, and it is capital group. Those are sewer projects, it's not, certainly not what I envisioned, uh, but, but it's, it's something that we can consider investing in as well. Then I guess the question for the board, is that something that's going to be worthwhile? Are we going to get bang for our buck?
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Is there, is there a secondary procedure that would not be less effective than a camera, but a whole lot cheaper, that might give some idea of, in other words, the doctor's going to put some dye in your veins, right? They can tell a lot. Is there any procedure where you put dye in the system or anything else that would be cheaper and in many ways less effective, but might be the sum of it?
Good question. And there are some, there are some things that you could do that, that may be cheaper, but they're not going to tell you nearly as much. In other words, when, they might tell you that there's a problem there, like the work that the staff has already done. When it rains and they pop some manholes and they say, wow, that came up. That tells, all that tells you is that there's a problem. It doesn't tell you what the source of that problem is, and that's what we need to identify. That, that's the kind of studying that me and Gus and Kent have done, watching the videos so that we can detail out exactly what needs to be done. Put it in the form of a bid document that gets sent out to contractors that have never even seen Buffalo Sewer System. And they can say, oh, okay, I see what you're telling me to do, you need to fix this spot here and reline from this manhole to this manhole. So you really got to, the video gives you a really good bang for, for your buck as far as finding out what the problem is.
Those are two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. How much of that is construction repair, or is this the entire vision of the system? Are we actually going to do any construction for two sixty-three and you repair?
Yes. The, the, well, I've estimated it at two hundred and thirty-three thousand, and then I, there's another thirty on top of that for bonding, insurance, mobilization. The two hundred and thirty-three thousand, that is for specific sewer repairs, including cured-in-place pipe, manhole-to-manhole relining, uh, lateral connection repairs for the, for the surfaces that, that are attached to the main line, a couple manhole repairs, a couple, couple spots where we're probably going to have to dig up a little bit of line, some of the highway crossings and such, or the roadblocks that we talked about. I've got that all listed here.
Can you tell me the blocks, is this in one area of the town, or is it various areas in the town?
Various, there's, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's three areas right now that we've looked at that he's talking about, that there's repair work in these three areas.
How much of this is the very oldest section?
Uh, the very first section we did was the oldest, and then the last one where you guys went in and found all the problems is also built as part of the town, the gray, no, not the gray, the clay pot. It is brick manholes in those areas. So two of the, two of the three were built or sectioned.
Is that where we're getting some rehabilitation to, is all the older part of town?
Yes. Well, I was with them when they videotaped, and it's amazing that, that they're pretty bad shape.
Well, with the water run off around various parts of town, where does it go? I mean, it was designed to go to the creeks, you know, at the original time, but somehow or another, that's been blocked off. Now, is any of this camera work looking in our drainage system?
We look for everything like that. We look for downspouts coming off of thousands, we, everything. We do our best to cover it all.
So you estimate that this two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is a phase that we should complete and then look again?
Yes, so at two hundred and thirty-three thousand, it's physical repairs, a contractor coming in and doing physical work to reduce I and I in the system, yeah.
Approximately, how long would it take to do this particular job? Time would be...
Three months of contractor on site.
From bidding to finish?
Yeah, I, I estimate three to four months.
So we'd be looking at summer to make a decision to, at that time, to go further?
I, I don't think we have time, Mike.
Well, I'm saying, we, we can do that situation, you step back after this is done and have an idea of, should we go on with more capital improvement taxes or money or something? That we still have a problem. This is not going to cure a hundred percent of our problems.
Right, that's right.
Approximately, how much of your problem, of our problem, is this going to cure? Yeah, I just, I'm not, I mean, you haven't looked at all of it, so it's just kind of got to be a guess.
Let's say a quarter, twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent. So if we're doing two thirty-three, we're looking at three quarters of a million dollars to put it back in one in shape.
Make a significant dent in, in the I and I based on what we need so far identified.
And we have to start somewhere, somewhere down line, the last nickel's got to be spent too.
Gus, how much I and I do we, I mean, how much problem are we having now?
Uh, well, as due to the dry weather we've had, we haven't had very much.
I, I mean, since we done those manhole repairs, though, have you seen a, a decrease?
Yeah, definitely.
Of any percentage idea?
Not, not of a percentage idea, but the, the flow has definitely gone down by at least twenty percent of, actually.
So it's a bendy flow.
Yes, yeah, that's the fluid, but, so. Well, one thing I don't know if it's being emphasized enough is, is we've got this pool of bond money, the SRF bond money, and it's, the city's advantage, we think, to use it all in one chunk and do as much as possible.
Yes, that's not the question. It's still two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, however it could loan. It's still the taxpayer's money. Because when we spend it, we have to spend it back. I mean, if we never spend it, we can retire the bond without that amount of money. So it's taxpayer's money, we're going to have to look at it. And it's our, our job to make sure we get as much for our dollars as we possibly can. But fortunately, we get the money. We didn't spend it when we did the first sewer, the second system. But those are questions that, and we'll answer those, because we know we've got to fix it, and somewhere down line, we're going to have to get it together. Does this satisfy the DNR at the present time, Gus, from what they're talking to us about?
Yes.
Are they going to come back in thirty days and say, you're going to spend another three quarters of a million dollars to find it?
You know, they're very hard to read, you know, exactly what they're thinking. I do know that EPA and DNR, both times they were down here last, seemed to be happy with us. And I certainly want to keep them that way. I don't want to get an asterisk again, so, uh, and, correct me on this again if I'm wrong, but what you're proposing is fixing that for two hundred and thirty-three thousand, and in the leftover monies, additional camera work.
Right. If, if the council decided that they wanted to indeed use, use that whole bond amount.
Two thirty-three, we can't spend the other, the rest of that, that won't come in.
And that would be camera plus rehab, is that correct? The, the additional, uh, sixty-four thousand, those would be just camera work?
The idea would be, you would, you would use that to do as much cam work as possible, but if you found something severe that needed fixing, you already have another contractor working on fixing the sewer system at the same time, he hops over there and does that for, for a unit price change over as opposed to having to do a whole new project. He hops over there and does that for, for a unit price change order as opposed to having to do a whole new project.
Okay.
So it ends up being kind of a.
And the cost of the change order would be included in the, the SRF fund. Well, let me get my question first. So, 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 so the, the extra sixty-four thousand dollars, we would be doing camera work, looking for hotspots that we, we could repair as the project is.
Yeah, kind of finishing things off, um, just while boots are on the ground, keep the speed.
As opposed to having to remobilize seventy-eight years later when we decide to do something for our city?
Right.
Okay.
If we continue right now, the two thirty-three, do the job? And made the commitment to go ahead and spend the sixty-seven thousand right now to do it all at one time? Are we going to get a break in our, in our tele, reading the lines? If we commit, are we going to get more feet for our buck? If we do it right, if we make that commitment to continue on with the job and spend the sixty-seven thousand dollars?
It would be anticipated, yeah, there'd be an economy of scale there. The, uh, the company that chooses to be the prime on the sewer rehab is going to have to find a sub to do the video work.
Would it be the same sub, the same video that we've done with the same people?
It very well could be if we were awarded the contract, if I, I interject.
Well, that's what my question, and that was what my question was. If we let you do this, continue with what you're doing for sixty-seven thousand, are we going to get more feet for our dollar? Your rate's been one dollar and a half.
Dollar and a half, that's correct.
You know, and that, that's what I was implying, that we get a few more feet for sixty-seven thousand versus waiting till we spend the two thirty-three? And you have to move and demove again.
Yeah, I mean, in answer to your question, absolutely. Because what we would look to do as VSINC would be to bid on the major project as well. Being that we have the capability to do all of it as well. And not just the cleaning and the videoing. Keep in mind, you're also getting your system cleaned as we video. So that's, that's a double shot there, the requirements that need to be done within the collection system itself. So, in answer to your question, yeah. I mean, we're all looking at getting the biggest bang for the buck here and, and helping out the citizens, getting the most value for the dollar. And doing a project of a larger scale, you're always going to get better value for your dollar.
So you yourself or your company has the capability to do this job? If you were awarded a contract, you have, you will bid on it?
We will bid on it, absolutely. Uh, not knowing what the scope of the project's going to be at this point, but yes.
I know what the scope is until the scope's written.
That's exactly right. So based on what I know and what I've seen, absolutely.
Then we better all to put in our scope to go ahead and ask for more footings to be looked at at the same time we do the, the main scope.
Yeah, so that would, that would definitely put you at an advantage from the economy of scale.
That's what I'm asking you, go ahead, instead of doing two thirty-three and stop and come back and do it all? And we do the scope, the entire job with the bidding to include that extra looking at the lines for the sixty-seven thousand or into the scope? And see what kind of bid, it could be an alternative to the bid.
Exactly, right. That, that's what I would propose. And so, as opposed to for the council to decide if they want me, now that our preliminary design is done? If they want me to put together a final design package that seeks to use up all or, or a defined amount of the SRF, SRF funding? By putting together the rehab that I've identified, the actual physical fixing up stuff that I've identified? Plus an alternative for cleaning and videoing that will be, the, the length of which will be determined based on how bids actually turn out? And how much money you guys actually want to spend on the project? I could put together a project that does that and therefore gives you the flexibility to, to save land whenever you want.
Well, is your, is your fee, Jerry, to, um, design and put the project together, is that included in this forty-one thousand? Or is this an outside?
It's included.
It is included. So we're, so we've already anticipated paying you to do the scope and the preliminary bidding.
Right, our scope was basically to use your excess SRF bond money to put together a sewer rehab project. And based on our preliminary design, it appears that we can't use all that money to do rehab. Because we haven't found that many broken spots, but there's always videoing and cleaning to be done. And that project can be put together such that any remaining money is used to accomplish that.
Can I ask another question? Actually, something Jess said reminded me this. Gus, when EPA was here last year, they had a long list of wants from us. Um, have they backed off of that list of wants? Or are we still looking at spending quite a bit of money to satisfy that want list? That was some alarms, maybe at the lift stations, a generator that could go to all the different lift stations. Where do we stand on that?
We're still looking at that right now.
So there is a potential pool of money we're going to need for that requirement?
Yes.
Do we know how much?
No.
Because we can use this SRF money for those kind of requirements too.
Yeah, we, we've looked into one part of it where, uh, we're looking at, we're supposed to put a telemetry system on all of those stations. And Jerry has looked into that just a little bit, but that's only preliminary stage right now.
Well, I need to see us spend all of our money and then have to come back in thirty days to comply with your list. You know, I, myself, I'm, I'm, the two thirty-three doesn't bother me, it's the sixty-seven that we've got left. We can always go, we can always go to capital funds. But this, this particular bond, fund, excess of the bond was, was to be spent on the sewage treatment plant.
It actually can be spent anywhere in the collection system?
As long as it is. I guess it's as broad as it is, long, we just have to come back and take the money someplace else, settle capital funds to pay for your existing names.
You know, either way, it's depending where you want to spend it. But if it all needs done, so it's just wherever you want to spend it at, one way or another.
Well, you know, Mary, I believe that we should continue to go forward with this. Hope Jerry, let's get the bids worked up and let's get the bids back in, see where we're at. And try to make some, try to get some work done on this thing as soon as the weather breaks. And if it's three months, how long before they can start? Take six to weeks to get the bids out and get them back, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll take us a month or two to get everything pulled together. And, um, depending on, there's certain things up in the air. I can't say definitively whether or not we're going to need a construction permit from DNR or not. It depends on, I just got a call once, once that scope is defined and see if they're going to accept a construction permit. If we need a construction permit from DNR, that throws another three or four months into the mix potentially. Because they take their time to that sometimes. I mean, it might add another three months to it. And then I hope that we don't have to get a permit and do this as maintenance. And as soon as we get things out, then we can advertise for bids, advertise for bids for a month. And then, uh, have a bid opening. And so if we don't need a construction permit from DNR, earliest would be probably May, when we're sitting here opening up bids. And we know where we sit at. Uh, I think the, the estimates that I presented in the sheets and in our analysis are pretty solid. I've checked those at a couple of different places, a couple of different companies. And those companies have done work at several different places around here. And so those numbers are basically region-wide solid. So I, I think we can expect the outcome to be, the rehab's going to pick up two-thirds of the money. Another third would want to save it for another project? Or do we want to invest in doing some camera work with somebody local here like VSINC? That can come over here and do that very quickly? Probably would make sense to go and have that done with whatever savings are still there.
But you want to work that up for us? And, uh, is, is that what the board's wanting to do?
Do we need a motion to have to award him the contract to do this?
We already got the contractor awarded. Uh, it's just a matter of us figuring out what we want to do and then he works it up. And then I guess we, we vote to go ahead and put it out for bid. And then we vote on which bid to take.
If you do a motion regards to his statement, letter January twenty-third, if this is. And then a motion that can follow, if we can start to work on it, it's an option.
Is there a second? I'll call for a vote.
Jess?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
A motion passes. Jerry, if you'll work it up and, and bring it to us on pretty stationary, we would.
Well, there.
All right, thank you.
Get a final design for you.
All right, uh, stipend for strategic plan. I met with the kids at Missouri State last week. I think it was Thursday evening, they had class and talked a little bit about their approach to Buffalo and what they're going to do here. I cast a tie-breaking vote at our last meeting to, to allow them to come in and, and work for the city of Buffalo, come up with a strategic plan. Uh, I thought, um, they said it would be no cost. Uh, we did provide a little bit of funds to the jury kids to help them, uh, with incidentals. I would simply propose, you know, five hundred dollars to the kids at Missouri State to, to allow them, uh, gas money and food while they're here working in Buffalo. That's my thought on that.
Is that something we could take out of capital improvement tax?
Don't.
Conference, conference.
I don't think so, but I, I think there's enough, I know administration's a little, little over. But they're, they're kind of front-loaded on that with insurance. I know there's two thousand dollars for improvements to City Hall that's budgeted. I think it could come out of, uh, administration. I don't foresee us spending a dime on this old building in the next upcoming months, so.
I'll make a motion that we, that we do that and go find the, uh, from the administration.
Is there a second? I'll call for a vote.
Larry?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Jess?
All right.
Motion passes. Uh, Green Space Trail, uh, and I, I think that might be moot is, is the, I don't think there's anyone from, uh, uh, from, uh, from, uh, Great River. We, we had a meeting on Friday where we had all of our answers, our, our questions answered. I, I think procedurally what we need to do now is, I, a motion to dedicate three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the project. And then from this point, Debbie would put out, uh, a bid request, but, uh, a request, RFPs for engineers to, to, uh, be chosen from, uh, to work on the project.
You might want to designate our part versus the grant.
But technically, it's all our part and then we get reimbursed by, by MoDOT. Every dollar that we spend on it, we send them the receipts and they send us eighty cents back.
You want a motion?
Sure. Is there a second? All right, I'll call for a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? And I apologize, I, I called for a vote before allowing for discussions. I think most of our discussions are front-loaded. I'll try to be a little more cautious of, of, any discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote.
James?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Jess?
All right.
A motion passes. Uh, Ms. Holston, you had prepared the, uh, the, what we need to put in the paper for engineers, is that correct?
Um, I mean, yes, it's what's on DNR's webs, or, I'm sorry, MoDOT's website. You just kind of modify it. I've got to make some changes based on dates and stuff. And I'll get back with the guy from MoDOT to get all that squared away.
Okay, and, and, uh, my, my question to Paul, what, what's our absolute deadline to get that to you so we can get that in the paper?
This afternoon? Tomorrow morning, per position you did.
Okay.
Last time I was leaving, somebody brought it to me before I could let the meeting.
I mean, you can, you can advertise it, it has to be advertised on MoDOT's website for three weeks. So next week in the paper will be fine, because that still gives you two weeks in the local paper.
Wonderful, all right, thank you. Uh, sidewalk proposal. I know we talked before about the idea of doing.
I'm going to put my two cents in the sidewalk. As far as I'm concerned, there's just one way to do the sidewalk. And that's bid them and forget it. For being, if it's prevailing wage, it doesn't make any difference, it's just a way to pay for this thing. That's bid them, get them done. The only thing, the only, the only other alderman that I think is that we do the demo work? Because that takes the skid loaders and the dump trucks. And I haven't talked to Roger, but Roger people are very quick to tear the sidewalks out. We've got dump sites that we can dump it. And only have them bid, laying the concrete with the certain specifications that we have. You got to bid it, let's look at it, let's see what it's going to cost. You have to decide if we think we can afford to cover the number of feet through the course of it.
That, that a motion?
No, I said that's a recommendation. There were several deals about this, but I, I just think it's, anytime, there's no, there's, you know, quits, curtains. And prevailing wage deal. Because anytime that we are in the entity, a public entity, the federal government says you will do prevailing wage, prevailing wage within your given area.
Well, federal government does it, the state says it.
Federal government says if there's federal government money involved in anything, it has to be done.
We're, we're not using federal money for this. And we haven't been scurrying any federal or state laws.
I, I respectfully disagree with my colleague, Mr. Stett.
We have the staff in place to do it. I don't think the issue is whether or not we want to build sidewalks. I think the issue is who and where to have them. And I simply think that we have at this time employees who are knowledgeable in building sidewalks. And it's absolutely nonsense to me not to utilize them. Whereas for prevailing wage, you're going to pay twice the wage when you've got people that can do it, you need to utilize them. Now, I understand there's a disagreement on this board as to who is going to build them. And, and I don't care, but if you're looking for bang for your buck in taxpayers' dollars? Why would you pay prevailing wage if you have people that are employees of the city and have been? Why would you not utilize them? It makes no sense to me that you would pay prevailing wage.
And, and I don't understand why you'd want to hire a company, let's say from Columbia to come in and do that for us? Or a company from Chalkaw, Oklahoma to come in and do that for us? When we have people that are local, already on the city payroll? Now, if you like people from Chalkaw or Columbia, that's fine.
Well, we just got through with the project that's not done yet. And we're not so sure what it would cost us one way or the other. Because we just did it one way. It doesn't mean that if we put this out to bid, that we have to accept any bids. If we bid it and it comes in and we decide that we don't want to take the job from Timbuktu, avoid it. It's not a mandatory situation. But the situation is, I think we need to know what it's going to cost us. Instead of giving inside, outside, brothers, cousins, and I don't care, an open checkbook.
We actually got a bid on the project that we just completed. And that was a bid two years ago, and the bid was twice what we're going to end up spending.
The bid was four-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars. Do you have it, Martha?
That's the engineer's.
That was the engineer's estimate. It was not a bid, it was an engineer's estimate.
The bid that they got.
No, that was the estimate for doing it in-house. Was it four-seventy-five or whatever it was?
And.
Wasn't there, Debbie, a bid on that project?
One point one million.
There was an engineer's estimate. That was Locust Street all the way out to the middle school, I think. I don't know what they did on this project.
I've turned it all out, redone it all, new asphalt, nevermind, dude.
It's a little different. The bid was more defined with bigger.
But keep in mind, the road that was built was a little different than what was in the four-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar estimate. And I talked with King, and now we're debating the Locust Street project, which is asinine. But I talked with King after our meeting on Friday. And he said that that four-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, I think it's four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-dollar estimate was for the bare essentials, Buick, without heat and air, without a radio, with one window that would roll down. I won't say that our guys out there built the Cadillac of a road, but they've built far beyond what was in that estimate. They didn't do it because they were bored, thought it would be keen to have a bigger place, a concrete to write their names. They did it because they felt it was necessary for water flow. Now, I don't know how many men sitting up here is like me. I'm kind of a geek. When it rains, I get excited, not because our crops can grow, but so I can drive up and down Locust Street and watch the water flow right into the drain. And it's just an awesome sight. How many of you have gone up there and driven about two miles an hour and drooled watching that happen?
Jerry, where are you?
I'm still, Jess, I think it should be put up for bid. We can reject it if we want to, but we don't know exactly. We're getting a bargain, and I think we need to study it. I do. Me either.
No, ma'am. I think, I think, we can put it up for bid, that's fine.
I think we can reject it, Kate, would you, for bid?
Sure.
But, but we're not gonna get the bid.
It doesn't make any difference. I make a motion that we put the projected sidewalks up for bid. I'll second.
I'll call for discussion. Is there any discussion?
We can always compare the bids that we get with what we've already got.
I'll check what I get.
Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Jess.
Hi.
Wayne.
No.
Larry.
Yes.
Kristy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
The motion passes. Jess, is your motion, are you gonna work up something for the public for a bid? Okay.
I mean, we could go to Google and ask them to build a four-foot sidewalk, see if that's to the city to look and we want rebarred or we don't want rebar. It's the same way if we were gonna do it ourselves. We have to make the decisions on how we're gonna do it. It's a four-foot sidewalk. It's four inches deep.
Mr. Piper worked on it. He's not here right now. This is your motion. I assume you're ready to do the footwork.
I may and I may not. I made a motion.
Okay.
He doesn't say that I'm gonna go for it.
One to clarify. All right. New business, picnic tables. Roger has built, how many so far?
He built seven on this last round.
Okay.
He'll probably approximate more and we'll have everything when these tables are checked up at the Horns Club.
Okay. So, so we're looking at, how many more at the Horns Club?
I have to count and then I don't have.
There's eight.
Eight at the Horns Club, okay.
I can get them, probably.
Eight.
Eight.
How much, and you're wanting to do approximately eight more to get them all done?
Pretty much it'd be all renewed and be, maybe eight more, or nine, eighty-nine.
Okay.
Approximately hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a table.
Okay, so.
That's payment, everything.
And they're real good tables.
Yeah, they do.
Tableware and everything on it, they won't break.
We've got a little bit of money and not a whole lot of money in our, in our capital improvement fund. And you're talking, let's say hypothetically, ten tables, a hundred-and-seventy-five, that's seventeen-fifty. Debbie, how much is in that fund as of, as of?
Forty-four thousand.
Would it be repugnant to ask for seventeen-fifty for Roger to do some more picnic tables before it's draft cut and done?
Sorry, I'll make a motion that goes with picnic tables and use the capital improvement tax to use them.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, discussion? No discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Jess.
Yes.
Kristy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
That motion passes. Last item under new business is Buffalo date Springfield Cardinals. The game is July twenty-seventh. And we've partnered with the Buffalo Baseball Club. They're gonna buy three hundred tickets, we're gonna buy two hundred. Traditionally, in the past, what we've done is that money can come out of the administrative fund and was paid back when the tickets were sold. We haven't lost money in the two years I've been mayor doing that. Although the first year I had to eat two tickets of the two hundred tickets that we purchased. I, I think it would be appropriate to add that to the minutes and bills, the total for the two hundred tickets is one-thousand-two-hundred dollars. However, they do add a ten-dollar group fee to that. So the total that would be needed to be written to Springfield Cardinals would be one-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten dollars.
In the past, though, have the baseball club purchased the three hundred tickets? Because now you're in competition for that.
Actually, we're a partnership. Last year, we've had three hundred total tickets. And they went and purchased, I believe, a couple hundred more. And they had people.
We got three hundred or two hundred first year. About we got three hundred first year, two hundred five year.
Maybe it's the other way around.
We have, I think, two hundred.
Maybe it was only two hundred last year. But prior to game time, we had people calling me and people calling Mr. Smith, inquiring about, hey, where can I get tickets when you sent them?
I think the baseball club had about a hundred fifty dollars. Do they know how many they have for sure that they ended up with?
I, I think they have more than that, because they purchased an extra section there.
I don't know how many they have. I mean, it would be a concern of, I'm not sure if we don't sign over a picture. Well, maybe if they can give us the number that they got before, they can tell somebody about last year. I would assume we have to.
Well, I've already committed the city to two hundred tickets. And that's under my fifteen-hundred-dollar budget. And that's in the ordinary course of business. My, I would simply dislike to get them paid sooner rather than later. This is a decision I made. Damn, for eleven baseball, huh, Jess?
I don't care what's in my pocket.
So, you don't have to do anything then? Do we need to approve it now?
I, I would. I would, I would hope there'd be a motion.
I will make a motion.
To pay the bill?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there, is there any discussion whether or not we should pay the bill? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Wayne.
Hi.
Larry. James.
Hi.
Kristy.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
All right, that motion passes.
How come they won't do that on consignment?
Consignment?
I have a question prior to going into executive session.
Sure.
We have one more thing.
Oh, you have an ordinance?
I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis.
We do have a new proposed ordinance. Been a couple folks inquire, I believe, one of, is it Signal?
Yeah, wine tasting.
Yeah, wants to have wine tasting. And this ordinance would allow them to do so. I know Eastside Tavern would also like to have liquor licenses to sell beverages other than beer by the glass. And this ordinance would allow them to do so.
Sure. We, we put it out before, but we just, we'd already delivered council fact. We got it out right after.
Just in case, if I have any questions, the two sections that were changed were the, in section six-hundred-point-oh-two-oh, that's paragraph seven, so that's the last paragraph there. And then the other section, it was paragraph C. Before that was twenty-five-hundred inhabitants and now it's twelve-fifty in order to commit multiple licenses instead of one for the population of the city.
You all demand the same responsibility.
I don't even drink.
I don't in town. But it's part of the area. Larry said he'd sponsor it. I got it. This way. Yeah, I'm making a motion. Yeah.
Larry's got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, yeah, second. Open the floor for discussion.
So what we're doing is, the old story, the ordinance said you had to have twenty-five-hundred, you had to have one license, liquor license for every twenty-five-hundred population.
For hard liquor.
For hard liquor. We've just been moving it down to twelve-fifty, and allowing a wine sampling.
Right, because under state law, it just tracks state law. There's a separate license that they have to get in order to do wine tasting. And so.
And this doesn't allow hard liquor, does it?
For the tasting?
I mean, for the license, it doesn't allow hard liquor.
I think it allows for an extra.
For an extra hard liquor. For a, for a, it was for one. Extra hard liquor.
Before we could only have one.
Maple Street license, Maple Street's got the only one.
No. And that's not the only one. Make the street fall into the restaurant.
Yeah, they have food.
Oh, okay, good. Does this require, is this a requirement, liquor control, the five million?
I mean, they are regulated by state alcohol. Yeah. They're already allowed, I guess, by state law.
Yeah.
Just a lot of them.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, they have different requirements.
However, maybe we allow, they have to have a city license and then they can get a state license.
Paragraph seven is for allowing for tasting wine.
Do we have a first reading?
No, sir. Oh, oh, I opened the floor for discussion. I'm sorry, we had a motion for first reading and second, is that correct?
Yes, just definitely.
Okay. Are we, are we through with discussion for first reading? All right, I'll call for a roll for the vote.
James.
Hi.
Kristy.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Jess.
I bet she learned more money.
All right, we call for a second reading, doing discussion for a second.
I make a motion pass a second reading.
Second, all right. Any discussion? All right, I'll call for a roll for the vote.
Kristy.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Wayne.
All right, that passes. And I'll sign that into law, I guess, this evening. The other issue is, I guess, Signal's hot and heavy to start handing out wine. And Martha informs me that they'll have to get a permit. And the board would have to vote to approve that. Does the board want to consider that? Is that appropriate?
You're asking us to approve the license for this?
They have, they have requests for a license. Wouldn't that be something we need to put on the agenda for, you know, the senate's meeting?
It's your call.
I mean, if you want.
You can, you can make a motion to modify the agenda, to add it to the agenda if you like.
Now, can they have?
If you don't want to, you don't have to.
Can they have an open container in there for tasting?
For tasting.
For tasting. They can have.
But there's, I mean, there are state laws about what they can and can't do.
That's what I'm getting at.
So, I mean, someone can't bring their own bottle of wine. And they have to import it and they have to provide the sample. And there's state, there's state laws in addition to the city ordinance that would control what they can and can't do.
Is this something we would want to consider tonight with a modification of the agenda? Or just want to put it on the agenda right now?
What you think, Kristy?
I just wonder if, I mean, what if people don't want that? And if we didn't put it on the agenda for them to know, I mean, that it's gonna be discussed to Rada, that would just be.
We'll go ahead and hold off and put that on the agenda for the next week. So, yeah. Okay. Is that all we have?
One other thing.
Yes, sir.
This, you just brought this winch voice. Is this to be considered at the next regular meeting?
Yes, sir. I need to get some bids for it.
Okay. So they'll agenda it to. I make a motion that this council will go in to. What? Call for citizens' comments.
I'm sorry?
Call for citizens' comments.
Oh, yes, yes, citizens' comments. The end of the agenda. Anyone from our public, anything at our here?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
At the last meeting, when we were, we were talking about the strategic plan.
Mm-hmm.
Three of the board voted no against it. And I just wanted to know what their concerns were about the plan and how come they didn't think that that was a good idea. And I know Mr. Piper's not here to answer, so.
I can't speak for them, you need to ask them.
It was Mr. Richel and Mr. Pitts.
Right here, I'll tell you why I didn't vote for it. He's from the Chicago area. And I really feel like his ideas would be from a different area than here. That's why I didn't vote for it.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly how to express it. Basically, it's just a little too ideal. You get an issue, you're gonna talk it today.
Thank you. My only other comment, which is something I brought up before. First, I want to say thank you to our veterans. There are no words, a thanks for that. However, I believe this was on news camera that was back here. I don't know who this big camera was. And when we're talking about our country, again, our flags are not correct in how they're standing out here. And I think that that's very disrespectful to our veterans, especially when we're honoring them. And so I just want to bring that to the board's attention again.
Hey, you brought it to my attention that one day. We fixed it.
I got it.
And while they were handing me that plaque, I thought about, after the meeting, referring to you as the word hang. Do we need to switch the positions of our American flag and our Missouri State flag?
The American flag is on the left-hand side when you're looking at it.
Okay.
If they're at the same level as the state.
And we fixed that once. And I, and I wonder why it got backwards. Does anyone here in the office know how it got switched backwards? Does, does anyone here, uh, in the office know how it got switched backwards? Bobby, did you do that? I, I, well, maybe, do we have, uh, maybe we had a, a community service worker vacuuming in here and I got this to Bobby later. I just like to let Bobby, we'll put it on his shoulders.
That's fine, go ahead.
Ma'am, we'll get that fixed. Any other citizen comments? Excuse me.
May I make a comment? I understand you being a parent, but I feel that before you take on any more new projects, the sidewalk, I think the city and the board should consider, make sure we've got a year at least of the tax increase in the budget before you do anymore. I don't want to see this town go bankrupt, it could happen very easily.
I understand your concern there. Are there any other citizens' comments? Yes ma'am.
I don't think she was here at the meeting when Mr. Richel and the rest of you voted to not allow citizens' comments during topics.
Oh, okay.
So I think she, I don't know, I thought you sounded a little snappy. So I think maybe she thought you was kind of snappy and told her no answers.
Ma'am, I apologize if, if I came across as snappy and I, I beg your forgiveness.
I, I, if I'd have thought any other, no, you had to comment at the end, it was my mistake, I'm sorry.
We, we have ample time to, to hear what you have to say.
Right.
Alright, thank you ma'am.
No problem.
Any other citizens' comments? I thank everyone for their attendance at this meeting. I'll call for a roll of the vote.